Seven oh three, twenty one four.
Yeah, I saw those, uh, you kind of got the minutes wait on Monday night. Haven't been able to hold them until this afternoon. It seems like six nineteen, twenty twenty four, there was really no edits since last.
Yep.
It was the same word count in seven oh three, I scanned it, I didn't compare it against my notes, but it seemed alright.
Uh, yeah, I read it through, it was over a few full minutes, so. Uh, seven oh three, uh, there were quite a lot of changes in that, uh, or additions. So I wasn't, I was kind of confused as to what were the final minutes, and I haven't had a chance to read those three. Um, so I'm thinking of tabling from seven oh three in mind, and I will be away next meeting, so if you could email them to me, the final minutes.
For ten.
Thank you. Um, so we have a, um, we have a motion to, um, for the payroll accounts payment in the minutes for six nineteen?
I'll make a motion here.
Thank you. Alright, um, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And we're tabling seven three four next. Thank you. Um, appointments, um, we, uh, let's see here. Ken Case has been, um, hired as our, um, code enforcement officer, and we need to appoint him as our health officer, uh, which is now part of the job description. Uh, but it has to be approved, uh, or appointed, uh, per state law. So, um, anyway, uh, someone met him and talked to him?
Met him before.
Yeah. Okay, excellent. Um, so, and I'll make a motion to appoint Ken Case as health officer for Tavon River.
Oh, second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Just one point.
Sure.
Is it all under the same stipend?
It's all under the same stipend, it's not separate anymore.
Thank you.
Yep. So, thank you.
You guys haven't voted on it?
Sorry?
You guys haven't voted on it?
Oh, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for checking on this, I appreciate it for you. Um, okay, citizens forum, it's, um, six oh six. Do I have anyone who want to speak, citizens forum?
One, two, three.
Okay, so we'll start here, Ron, you were first, please.
Yes, thank you. Uh, Ronnie Demelton, and I had a question before because you saw in your column about the, uh, school budget threats.
Yes.
Okay, and so now that we know that Jeff Reese owes ten million for the school, and they pay eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars a month, and when
Thousand dollars.
Oh, fourteen million, and we pay one million, two hundred and fifteen, um, a month. So my question to you two, have you been to any meetings? You know, I think in regards to what's going on, and it's gonna go up.
Yes.
Yes.
I don't believe they've had any, Ron. I've been looking at their calendar, and I haven't seen a budget committee.
So, no meetings at all?
They went to one, um, they went to one a month, um, and just the next one's not until in August, but usually they start up around September for my last year as experience, and it really was kind of in the back door, but I'm paying attention to it this year, and I have further comments on it later on.
Yep, I, uh, thank you. I've had informal discussions, uh, basically covering the same theme, and I'm beating the drum. Uh, if you're running on a default budget, uh, it's not an excuse to raise it this year, because that's what you chose, and you said, "This is good." Um, so, uh, basically, uh...
Say that again?
Well, two years ago-
What did you just say?
Well, let me repeat. Uh, two years ago, when I went to ask why there was huge budget, budget increase, uh, they used the excuse, or I heard that one of the excuses was that, well, the previous year was default budget. So, of course, this year we need to make it up for all the things that we didn't buy and so forth. Uh, when they went and chose a default budget this year, a budget that's actually less than the default budget that would show up on the ballot, I, basically, I approached them and I said, "Well, this does not mean that next year you have an excuse to double the, um, you know, increases, and, uh, that if you feel that this is the budget this year, that's fine, um, but we need to move forward next year with a reasonable increase, if at all." So, uh, I have been beating that drum, and I have been trying to maintain that message when they start the budget process.
Okay, thank, thank you both. Uh, one other thing, though, uh, this year they'll be bringing in SEL, social emotional learning, which is bull crap, because if they block this on the children, so I hope you two fight against it. And in other words, the teachers are not comfortable, but this is what we're gonna be paying for. We're gonna be paying for all the children's medical. So I'm hoping you learn more about it, it's SEL, look it up, read about it, and fight against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, with us, please. Uh, they have two people with their hands up first, I don't catch all two also. Uh, Ron, you were next.
Yeah, um, a couple of weeks ago was-
I'm sorry, could you identify yourself?
Ron Osmo from Rains, New Hampshire.
Thank you.
On Thomas Road, by Bean Hill Road, right? Uh, we were talking about facilities, improving of some facilities around the town, like the, uh, police department and the buyer department are kind of combining them, they were gonna, you were gonna have a committee, right? But we kind of postponed it. Can we bring that committee on? Uh, I passed out these community facility direct loan and grant programs. I've been receiving them, I just got them actually from, uh, Ann Custer, St. Red Group, and we're in contact with Maggie Hassan, uh, and the two guy, people that are working on this, uh, working together on this. And if you read it over, it looks pretty good, but now we need a commission or something, you know, uh, a committee, excuse me. A committee to get together, put our hands together and say, "Okay, what do we need?" Uh, you know, we don't need no really popular. Thing like, and, uh, and, uh, and fill out this for, for a grant, and if there's so much as a grant that they give us, they also, uh, loan, uh, money with the, with the grant too, and that all comes from the state, so, uh, I think it's about time, uh, that we do something for those buildings, especially, you know, they're kind of falling apart. And we got, and we got new, uh, people, you know, like females and now we have males and stuff like that, and you need their special, you have to have special rooms and stuff like that, and all that stuff. And, uh, we're sitting in, in the police office the other day, and, uh, with all the winds and stuff like that, and you look up on the ceiling, the ceiling probably, it's all, you can't go upstairs because it's, it's condemned, it's all blah blah blah. Um, mill building, everything up there, yeah. And you know what, you know, you know what I, I, you know, if we have to, when we buy vehicles, they have to be specially built because you don't have the lances and stuff like that. And what, you know, on your nineteen twenty-five, uh, post office nineteen ninety, so, just, I think you just have a, you know, salary then.
Thank you, bro.
Can I, uh, respond to that?
Oh, please.
Ron, um, I know you and I discussed this a little bit, I've been pushing this for a couple of years on the capital improvement program. Um, it was dismissed, um, the year before.
Right.
Wanted to start something. Um, I reviewed what you handed out to me when I was in the office the other day.
Right, oh, thank you, sir.
Um, I, I think that we need to look further into it, you guys have a rural development proof to get really some real answers? This is kind of a cross everything that works on-
Oh, no, I, I talked into, you know, Mr. Hyde from the office and stuff like that.
Is he at the rural development office?
Yep, from that, and there, and, uh, also we got our unique identity numbers because of, we've been doing grants and all that.
Yeah, it's true.
So the tenant's there, that's where we, you know, and, uh, and that, so...
Well, I think it's gonna come up on the, we're having an initial capital improvements committee next week, and so we, we're, I'm sure it's gonna come up.
Alright.
It's kind of an initial thing to get going, but, um, facilities have been on the
Right.
sleigh for a few years.
Yeah, there's a couple of, you know, uh, I'd like to get some more answers on this stuff like that, and I'll get that, you know, and pass it around. Thank you, sir.
Um, okay, oh, I'm sorry, then we had, uh, Rebert.
Rebert, hey, sir, seventy eighth street. Um, I know it's on the agenda, but, uh, since the board does not have to take public comment, um, I'm here once again, about the meeting house. Um, financial situation with, um, expenditures upcoming. Is there any progress on getting commitment from the UCC on their share?
Did you want to address it?
Mike, Dan.
Alright, I, I have to comment also, well, sure, maybe I have to.
The UCC's position is that they have expendable monies of approximately three thousand dollars per year.
So the answer is no.
That would be the answer.
Yeah.
Hold on, is this for the house now?
The, um, the, the UCC, it has a lease agreement with the town, and they're supposed to pay half of the expenses. Um, and there's a fairly substantial one coming up with painting. And, you know, it's like, the, um, town can't, according to law, cannot subsidize a church. So they have to pay what they agreed to as far as the lease agreement, uh, in order to occupy the rest. And doing a trade-off isn't exactly paying the expenses.
Okay.
Yep. Sure.
It was brought to my attention too about, um, the parsonage itself, and whether to look into it or not, is to what's being paid in taxes on that building.
Zero.
And it is zero. And the problem being that a parsonage is tax exempt only when the person lives within it.
Yep.
The person has to live there at least for a couple of years now that I'm aware of. So, the assessment office is looking into that right now.
Okay, uh, so we have two questions on the follow-up on this, but I also have Richard next. Um, so Richard, do you want to delay yours, so we get some, some, yes, Tom, can I?
Come back to you.
Yeah, I'll come back to you, okay. Uh, passage of comment?
My comment is that my understanding is that the church, that originally the proposal was to paint the church, and that the, um, church agreed to pay their share, but then the town decided that they might as well do the sheds as well. And this was beyond what the, um, the church had agreed to, to begin with. And, you know, basically, they're in a position that they don't have the money, uh, for this extra project, and the town wants to do it. You know, it should be both parties, they're supposed to vote on it and agree, and that's what happened, and then something like that. That's my understanding, I just-
I heard the same thing, and he said that the, um, that's going to be more expensive to spend it, then he would have voted against it, because he, we think we'll afford it. Uh, I have another comment for Judy.
Judy Humber-Clark. I would just like to have people realize what community service the UCC church currently is affording our town, how the parsonage is being used on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays. People are packing, got lunch, is that the proper term? Serving over eighty families in our community. Another service the UCC has done last year were community conversations. These may be overlooked, but these are services the town, the church provides to our town. No compensation from, or, it's all volunteer. There's a lot of volunteer effort that comes from this church. So pandemic times were rough, and the church is struggling, many of the churches in town are struggling. But the churches are providing hidden community services for our town.
Thank you. And I don't want to start the debate here, so I'm giving you a comment, and then I'll give the two of them, okay? Reberta, do you have anything to say?
Yeah, just, um, the, um, the whole thing is, is that, you know, we can't subsidize a, a church, and even though they've been there two hundred years, and I appreciate what they've done over the years, but the fact that they expanded the project, it's real simple. You subtract the forty thousand dollars from the total, and it still comes down to what's left, gets divided in half.
Okay.
It's, it's not that they're going to be paying to paint the horse sheds, which are the town property.
Thank you. Um, anything else, uh, citizens forum? And is this a new topic, or?
Yes.
Thank you.
A new topic. Well, actually, I have two, two things, Debbie, Debbie Quailey. Regarding Ron's comment about a new safety complex, I'm a for a new safety complex. However, until we can get the school budget under control, uh, speaking for myself, we wouldn't be able to afford that.
I'm sorry, please, um...
That was a yay.
Well, we don't, it's not appropriate right now. Dress things, get called on, dress things to the chair, please, yeah.
Uh, so I just wanted to say that, and I don't think I'm speaking just for myself. The taxes in this, for this town are, are so high that it's driving many people out, and it's due to the schools, not our town budget. We really need to do something about that, and thank you, Ron, for bringing that up. Uh, my other thing is, uh, where I live, at the corner of one nineteen and Meadowview, it's become a dumping station. Right now, we have a double mattress that's been there for a couple of days, and, uh, it's not something we can put in our cars to, to take to the dump, and we're, we're not gonna pay for somebody else's problems, and that's why it's there probably, because they have to pay to get rid of it, and they don't want to. Um, is there some way the, um, highway department can come by, like on a weekly basis or something, and just if anything's there, throw it in the truck? Or do we, or should, or should the protocol be, we should call and ask them to come? I mean, now it's full of water. Nobody's gonna want it anyway. So I just don't know what to do about this, the situation.
Is it on the town road or the state road?
It's on the corner, I don't know, Jim, would you know?
Well, it's down, town, state.
Okay, thank you.
It's probably actually on somebody's private property.
It's on common land of the, um, I think, but I don't know.
Alright, thank you. I can add a little- Um, thank you, Jim.
Jim Quailey, it's, it's actually on the town right of way. Town right of way, from Meadowview Road is owned by the town.
Yep.
On that particular road, and it's on the town right of way.
Okay.
Have you called Mike to ask him to pick it up?
Uh, I can address that. What, what, what my wife Deb is asking is what should be the procedure?
Right.
This is how, this sort of thing-
I don't believe there is a procedure for that.
Oh, it's not, it's a beginning, thank you.
This sort of thing is happening on a regular basis. Most things don't stay there very long, but some do. Some people just dump it stuff there.
Furniture too, furniture just gets left there.
So, no, you're right, it's a bigger problem than it's supposed to, one person-
So, what should we do in this instance?
Well, in this instance, I don't know, and I would say, um, talk to Mike, um, and you direct your inquiry to Lori, and she will communicate with Mike on this, okay? So... Yep, please.
I'll mention one thing on that, the last time that I got to get involved in, it wasn't specifically dumping, but there was a car that was parked there for sale for months. Wants it to be moved out of there, well, it wasn't too hard to find the person, because his phone number was on the sign for sale.
Yep.
So the police called them up, told them to move the car here, a belligerent, brought him over to the car, and he reluctantly moved it out. And it took Rachel all two hours to get the car moved out of there, but that is a dumping ground.
Yep.
They don't, they don't want to pay for it to dump it at the dump, so they leave it there with a free sign.
Right. I remember one day Ron had his hand up, which reminds me that, um, uh, that we basically split, it was on Thomas Road, and went down, and we had about twelve bags full of clothes. Air cans.
Oh, the air cans.
Oh, the air cans, yes. And, um, it seemed like the favorite spot, and we had two police cars there, eventually they helped us on the other end, but-
And we had another incident on that, uh, last year, it's something just up about, uh, all kinds of clothes. I mean, it was just all, I, I was gonna say something. I usually, you know, I go around and pick up stuff. I had the same thing happen, mattress about a month ago.
Mm-hmm.
Really, really rainy nights, and I would have put that in my truck, but it was just too heavy to do that.
Yep.
So I called up Mike, and they picked it up.
Right.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I think, uh, in general, people should address this stuff too. Right, we do keep the transfer station costs for propping off mattresses and chairs and couches artificially low, um, much lower than, you know, with, but this is largely to prevent this sort of thing.
Yeah.
So, um, in terms of, I don't think we could go much lower realistically in what we're asking, because it's just a nuts kind of amount. And that's not what's motivating people to dump it, it's not because they have to pay ten dollars for a mattress. So, thank you. Um, and we have, yes, Richard.
Uh, more of a public information notice that, you know, most of you know, the construction commission conducts tours of various properties from time to time, and this coming Sunday, one was scheduled for the Madison Wildwood Corridor, and it has to have been canceled because of the storm last night, and, uh, a little bit of information to go with that. There was microbursts, you've heard of them?
Yep.
We had three separate ones that happened to overlap in all three cases with trail. So we have like seven or eight trees that are maple trees, ten, twelve inches, pine trees, two feet, and all piled together like, uh, jackstaws. Uh, in three separate places, one's a couple hundred yards down on the main trail, that, you know, snuggleshoes a lot, that goes down to, uh, Camp Wildwood, it merges with ours and goes to the power line. There were two of them on that, a couple hundred yards apart, and a side trail was lower down the hill that was a third one. So probably, I'd say, a hundred trees, and these are substantial, when they fall, they take others with it.
Yep.
So it, it's a total mess. So we're gonna have to put trail closed signs there until we get it picked set up. But anyway, the walk this Sunday is postponed.
Okay, thank you. Uh, anything else for citizens forum, any details? Good.
Uh, one, one thing, the reason I came here-
Start, start, can you identify yourself?
Yeah, uh, my name is Matt Russell, I live on, uh, at seven twenty-nine Forest Dollar Road, the first half, after you take a right on the Forest Dollar Road, right?
Yep.
The reason I came here is, I've never been into this stuff, but it's really interesting so far. Um, I've been curious, but I've just seen multiple times in the recent days, um, panhandling. So I don't know if the, just an hour ago, right before I came here, I'm, uh, coming out of, uh, Market Basket, so I don't know, I, I know there's like public, uh, First Amendment, Amendment, rights of panhandling and stuff like that in Hampshire, but I don't know if it is like in Ridge. So that's the reason I came here, I went to the police station to ask for them, but their doors were locked, so I decided to come here and just take a listen, that's all, and it's been really interesting.
I can answer that, or maybe partially answer it.
Um, Tom first.
I, I had questions, paid a payment with the chief, we're looking at the department as well. And they said essentially they can't really do much, the property owner, if the property owner calls-
To trespass them?
They, they can have them move along, but otherwise, it's kind of, I don't think we have an ordinance in town to get a panhandling.
I looked into it also, there is no ordinance in town for panhandling. It's up to that property owner to make a complaint to the police department, and they'll handle it from there.
Okay, because I, I've only been out here in Ridge for a year and eight, in eight months, and it's, I'm just seeing it now the past few days, so it's a, it's a first for me, so I was just curious, I'm, that's all.
Market Basket, I've seen it in Market Basket and Hanaford, and they both had the same sign, by the way, at the locations.
Oh, yeah.
And, um, Market Basket had called, and they said they couldn't give anything down at the Walmart, because it's Walmart's property, and they couldn't do it.
Understandable.
So...
Thank you. Alright, uh, citizens forum is officially closed at, uh, six twenty-eight. Thank you. Alright, um, new business, and thank you for coming. Uh, yes, um, we have Kurt Stenderson and Shayna, and your last name, I always miss out, because it's very, uh, close to Charles. Eitner?
Yes, thank you.
Um, so basically, we have an election coming up, and this discussion, I wanted to open the discussion now about election machines, because, um, although we can't get it in time for the current election, um, and probably not even for November, um, but we'll see. Um, I wanted to, we had, um, a, a presentation on two machines, uh, and I wanted to just share with the public what you found, and we, at some point, we need to make a decision. Uh, and I understand we also have to wait until they're approved by the state. We can't just go get a machine at Walmart, and, um, so that's, they have state approval, and I think one of them has been approved at this point. So, um, who would like to, who would like to go first?
So what do you want to hear?
I'm gonna figure out that, you want, you want to present one, both machines, or one machine, or what do you, what do you want to share?
I'll, I'll give you just my, thank you, my kind of pros and cons, you've got two options. LHS, who's been around since nineteen seventy-two, um, and currently services our AccuBowl machines. Um, they have, again, good as bad news, depending where you stand. Um, they're looking at, and have the Dominion machine, um, which is the Image Cast Precinct Two tabulator. Um, again, they've been around since nineteen seventy-two, same price as the other one. Um, seven grand upfront cost, annual maintenance is three hundred dollars a year. Um, ballot printing cost is the same as it is today. Um, they're a New Hampshire-based company. The other option is a Voting Works machine, and before I jump to that, the other thing that I just found out this evening, um, is their customer service, which we've always been impressed with, is still very good. I called, left a message at two minutes to five, um, with a couple of questions and clarifications that I wanted, and I had two different people call me that before five thirty. So, you know, that's good service in my opinion. Um, the drawbacks that I see on that one, and I really don't think it's a big deal currently for our school ballots, typically, we will do them on colored paper, um, just to distinguish them from the town ballots. The Dominion, uh, machine, um, tabulator does not allow for printing on color. I'm not sure what the issue is, it doesn't accept it, but it will do a color header. So you just have a top header on it, be it in a color, um, it's, there's not an issue. So, if they get the same result, you'll be able to see the difference between the two ballots. Uh, the Voting Works machine, um, it's actually a company called Voting Works. They started in two thousand and eighteen, so they're a fairly new company. Um, again, same price, seven thousand dollars. Their maintenance fee is a bit higher, um, it's five hundred dollars a year for their maintenance fee. The, and additional five hundred dollars per election, uh, on top of the year maintenance fee. Um, we do have a, um, laptop that goes with that unit, um, that is a required part of that unit. Um, they can print on colored paper. Bold of the machines, um, print out results on full-size paper rather than, uh, bold. Um, it's special paper for the Voting Works machine. I'm not entirely sure if this- I'm not entirely sure if this makes a difference on the Dominion machine, if it can be standard paper or not. That's one question I didn't get answered. The Dominion machine does not require a laptop. They do have a setup that you can buy separately for a laptop. But for us, it really wouldn't make a difference. You take London Dairy or Manchester or bigger precincts where you've got, you know, multiple precincts within either town or city. And rather than taking and printing off results from each of the six different precincts, say, and hand add them together, punch the numbers into a spreadsheet, you just plug it into the USB drive in the computer and it's a program that will tabulate it all for you. I, not to be mean, but I say that's for the people who went to slow math class. It's not that difficult. And for here, we only use one machine anyways. So the only time we've had an issue with having to add two tapes together is on webbing days. We try to stuff web out through, it will not work. And so we had to jump through the machine. That's the only time we've had an issue. Again, it's two numbers for us. So that's kind of the ten thousand foot view on the two machines. I can try and answer any questions as far as the recommendations. They both have their pros and cons depending on how you feel about things. I think they're both fairly secure. From what I can see, the Voting Works machine does have full approval to begin in March. I may mention as far as we have September and November election. Neither machine is approved, yet effective March first is when you can begin using the machines of two thousand twenty-five. So for this election cycle, the next two elections, it makes no difference. For the AccuBill machines, there's no new machines used in the Voting Works or the Dominion machines that are being used in state elections. The Voting Works have, that's what they, the Voting Works, I could be wrong on that, but we're interested in it. But that was my understanding. The, but the Voting Works machine has the full approval, but come December of two thousand twenty-six, the federal certification of EAC, which I have no idea what that stands for, just made a note, so two point O will be required. But that standard, as my understanding is, that standard has not been yet published. The reason that the Dominion machine does not have that is they're waiting till that gets published. And that should be in time for them to have approval by the end of the year. And that's what they're waiting for. So they just do it in one step certification rather than have to go through the certification process.
I had a couple of questions, but one of them is up to the end of the year. In terms of when we would have to put in an order for a machine, is the end of the year time enough to get anything ordered by March?
I don't think that would be an issue. They've been talking to Brenda, do you know who her name was? I spoke to her this evening from LHS. She said they anticipate it will not be an issue. They anticipate having a flurry of orders. You know, I explained to her that, hey, from my standpoint, I'm not willing to make an order on a machine that doesn't have certification. It makes no sense. So, you know, for as far as we're getting one through LHS, one or two, depending on the county sets to its price or back up or not. You know, I told her we wouldn't be doing anything until they had final approvals, at least from my opinion. I'm not the one voting on it. I'm not the one making the choice, but if someone wants my opinion, and I believe that's why I'm here, I wouldn't do it. So as far as for the Voting Works, one, like I said, they do have final approval to be able to be used in March. But don't know if they would need the EAC two point O certification as they get.
Exactly.
So you've got a drawback there for the, you know, fairly new startup company. They not get enough orders for them and bail on the whole process and now you're starting to open it. I know, like I said, there's pros and cons both ways.
Right.
And I know the Dominion name has a reputation, but yes.
And basically, let's say, people raise the issue of election security as they should. But having to use a computer, this is creating another issue in terms of security. Because right now, we basically send them through and count it. We start off with a zero count, we know it. And if we're dealing with a computer, are we entering, putting another element into the mix?
I'm not a computer guy, but, you know, I always look at it as zeros and ones and anything is hackable, in my opinion.
Yep.
How many news headline stories do you see where stuff's hackable? If it's been hacked, it's, you know, typed in, it's unthinkable. Well, guess what?
Yep.
It's unbelievable. You mean, it's, it can be done. So that is a concern from my standpoint. The, as far as the Dominion one, it does not, it's not connected to the internet. You're not directing it to a computer. We don't need to get to a computer. The, you know, it's encrypted. As, you know, they have a much better, as far as for presenting the information on their machine. This is the booklet that comes with the LHS. It's a full booklet. The Voting Works machine, it's two pages of paper. So, you know, you definitely get a little more information as to what they're doing, your security and that type of stuff. And everything gets, as far as for on even on the, again, because there's more information on the Precinct Two tabulator, that there has every ballot, there's an image of it that you can pull up, every ballot of how it made the determination of what it chose. So, and there's settings that get done on a election basis. It has to be consistent across the board for every town, every state. You know, if it's a federal election, then it's every state's gonna be the same. Where if that mark is filled in twenty percent, it's gonna count it as a vote. If it's under twenty percent, it doesn't count as a vote. But it will have an image of every ballot that goes through and says that one didn't get counted, that one's counted. And so you can go back through and look at every ballot.
And a question on that is, which one, again, is that the LHS or is it the Voting Works?
That's through LHS.
Through LHS. But it doesn't have a computer, but it will take Ridge.
Yep.
Oh, it does take a Ridge, I think. What's the timeframe, Kirk? I mean, do we need to kind of wait for certification?
So that's my recommendation is, I mean, and if you're gonna go with the Voting Works machine, then, so again, so here's the drawback to it, right? You say, okay, you know, how's that a call? We don't want to deal with Dominion. There are too many people to push back and sit, you know, and how many, you've stood there at the polls. How many questions do we have each election if there's a Dominion machine? It's understandable. And, but at the same time, if you do the Voting Works machine, you can order it now. It's, it can be used come March. Next year, we have one election. So two thousand twenty-five, you're covered. They don't have a certification, is my understanding, for the new federal requirement because that requirement hasn't come out yet.
Yep.
So, yep, we can be ready to go and make the purchase now for Voting Works, but we're not sure that it's gonna be any good past two thousand twenty-six. And it's a startup company. Your concern is, are they going to be there after that point? Again, I'm just throwing concerns out. The Dominion one, I would say that, you know, you wait until they get that certification. By the time they have the certification, they would have full certification. They're waiting for those federal requirements before they go through the second stage of the certification process. They have the preliminary certification. So, and, you know, then you'd be covered on that. Those are your two choices. So as far as the waiting or not waiting, if you want to do the Voting Works one, you can go forth and make a decision. Order one tonight and vote one, you get thirty-five million bucks in the state towards one and off you go. Or you wait, in my opinion, you wait no matter what, but you wait until the end of the year or for the other one gets their certification and then you can make a decision from there. From what I've heard from, I'm not too concerned about turnaround time of getting one. I mean, I don't want to be trying to order one February twentieth, but, you know, for March election next year.
And to your point, we only have a little traction, correct?
Sure.
Sorry.
I'd love it for that.
Yep, sorry. Did you have any?
I, I went one step further and actually-
Thank you.
I could email out to all the town folks and, you know, asking if they have already submitted. And if they have, how do they feel about your decision? I've got forever pants to get. They do, they take forever pants, they do man. But I got a few here. And the only one that's sticking with Dominion is Milton. And they're sticking with it because Accudu, they've had them forever, they like them. That was their reasoning for it. I have, that's my answer from LHS. Oh, let's see. I knew Winchester was buying the Voting Works. He told me that when I went through the, what do you call it, I went through the- No, what was it, training? It was, to do it?
Oh, the demonstration.
Demonstration, thank you. When I went for the demonstration, after the demonstration, he said, I love it. This is what we're getting. I sent him an email specifically saying, did you buy it? Do you like it? And he says he loves it. Winchester is visual. They want to be completely clear with everybody. So the thing that gives them, they're gonna go after the thing where everybody's gonna see what they're doing. So that they can't be, can't be anybody saying you're doing something behind the scenes and we don't see what you're doing. They're very big on that one. But he said he loves it. The transparency is great. Um, who's this? Northwood. I don't even know where that is. They bought a Voting Works. These people have bought them and they've been using them. And they like it. They said it's a change. It's not, everything's not the same, but it is never the same. They like it. You said that you can use paper in the DHL, the Dominion one? Because they told me, no, it was a, it was like the grocery store, like we always have, the rolls. They told me when I had the demonstration that, no, it was in the rolls, it wasn't in paper. But that, that was one of her things that she likes is that, was it one for, no, there was somebody else that said that. She, the purple that stands out on the ballot, I guess the ballot machine stands out so you can see where it is. But she likes the big one because it, you can put it up on the screen, the results at the end. You put it up on the screen, everybody can see it, rather than the way they prefer, prepare to yell out the results. You can just put them up on the wall. There they are. Everybody can see them. Um, Multenboro, she wrote me a book about, they have Voting Works as well. They've been using it. They've been using it since May. And it, like I said, it's a book telling me every little thing she likes about it. Um, I did contact, I contacted LHS and they told me that they, because they don't have that test report, they, and they won't have it until March twenty-five. But they will continue to support what we have. Now, what we have, both our machines went down this last election. One was due to hand sanitizer and now it got stuck in the machine. The other one, it's just, it's the secondary. It doesn't get used that often and it just kind of, it's worse than not being used. It took them four months to come and fix them. Four months, four months? Three months, three months to come and fix them.
Four months is now from the election run.
So it was our month if they came and I need to fix them, as well as the ballot box that had some issues. But when I went to my meeting, my conference, they did tell us that they had parts and everything to go through the end of this year. The only thing they don't have is the, is it, we had that set runs on?
The box.
The software that runs on is absolutely, Windows MX or something like that?
Windows X.
XP, is that XP?
Yep.
Yes, that's obsolete. But they're going to continue to support the ballot machines until we can, until they can use them.
Okay, yeah. We're installing.
And that's just that, or yes, that.
No.
Just pull it up.
So now we're replacing the machine, so, thank you.
Like you said, when?
Yep.
And do we want to wait for, one of the people, the one that wrote me the book, she did say that they did have a problem with one piece of Voting Works. They called them, they told them that this is an issue and they, right away, she said it was something.
Okay, well, thank you. Appreciate it. So basically, clearly, it's not an imminent decision that has to be made. And I'd like to hear your comments on, pray with thoughts on it if you wish. Do you have any thoughts on the presentation?
By the time, we'd probably go with Kirk's recommendation that we kind of hold up the certification. It's not imminent and I think, you know, they're pretty good judge books. So I think if we can move what we have now, I think probably a lot of waiting, maybe a month till the end of the year. I think with just one election, I think that's worth it. At least waiting for some, maybe some further feedback from other people.
Anything?
Yeah, I read the response to the RFPs that was put out by the Secretary of State. They were long to me for a couple of months and I read them through. Now, the Secretary of State at that point in time hadn't approved either of the two machines, but they were the two that were in contention. That was a couple of years ago, maybe, or a year ago?
Last year.
Last year. So I forget most of the thing because they were quite extensive, the responses. Each of them were about a hundred and fifty, two hundred pages long. They both, I do remember one had paper printout and all that, which was great. Seemed good to me anyway. I had questions about the box that it was on. As we have the old type system with a flapper in it and all that. Just wanted to know what the standard box was. It was supposed to be a portable, portable box underneath and all that. But they didn't say that that was an extra charge or not. I didn't like the fact that one of them required a laptop because that is absolutely, if it has any port that you can plug into it, a USB, a network port, two hours, two thirty-two, a floppy disk, a CD drive, any one of those things could be corrupted through that, corrupt that paper laptop. So I didn't like the fact that Kirk mentioned that one of them required a laptop for it to operate. And I did have a question about two machines. We found that we really need two machines. We found, I know in the case that I've worked with Kirk, we've only had one that it was a total failure at one election. Thank God it happened fifteen minutes before the polls closed. We were able to retrieve all the information. We put up the secondary, the backup, and we're able to add the two tabulations together. But it was a little bit of a nightmare in the last fifteen minutes of an election, which was already very busy. So that worked out. But I really would like to know if two machines can work in tandem. One broke down. We only need one machine to handle a lot of election. We're not that logical. But we need the backup. Convenient if we just could have taken a cable and gone between the two of them and had one backup to the other. So we would take the tabulation from the first machine that broke down and transfer it to the second one rather than, we had to cut the security tape and all that on the machine with the approval from the state. machine with the approval from the state and pull out the memory card out of one and put it into the other. And that was the means of transporting the information.
Yep.
We were, believe me, to cut the security tape on the voting machine scared the crap out of me. I don't know about you, but we got permission. We were told, "Yes, do that. Cut, cut the tape." We did. But I wasn't real happy with doing that.
True. Don't want to go through that again, Kirk.
Yeah.
Do not reboot.
I understand that, you know, in that case, it's a, you know, it's basically the memory card that that's what the election run is on. That's what gets sent. But we send it to accident at the end of the election anyways currently. So we just added an extra step of moving it to the backup machine. I'm not 100% sure and I don't believe that you can connect them. Again, that's why if you were to purchase a laptop for tabulating amongst, you know, between multiple precincts, you pull that, for lack of a better term, that memory card lighting your computer for each one of those precincts and that's what tabulates it. So I'm assuming it's very similar to the Accu-Vote machine where you'd be able to pull that memory card and put it into the other machine, just like we had the issue, you know, in one of the previous elections when we had to do that. But I prefer not to make that phone call to determine that new election.
What hasn't been reviewed with us tonight is the fact that LHS is the name of the company that maintains the Accu-Vote machine that we have right now. Everybody in the state was using it since 1986 or so.
It's been a long time.
Yeah, it's a very long time.
Ninety-two.
Ninety-two.
That's ninety-two technology.
Which is fine because we don't need protected security on Windows XP because we don't go online with it. We don't load programs with it. We just maintain an old computer software system and that's been fine since XP was out. So there's no real issue with that. The issue is that the hardware is not available anymore. LHS, they don't make the hardware for the Accu-Vote machine. You can't buy parts for it. Every part that we buy is refurbished part and they're getting scarce.
It's all 32-bit, not 16-bit.
What's that?
It's all 32-bit, not 16-bit chips.
So, and if I may, please, the only reason there's no feedback, like Shannon said, as far as her, from other on the machine, LHS or lots, the Dominion machine is because they're not in service and exactly getting feedback on those.
They're waiting too, some of them?
Well, no, they just, because they don't have their certification, you can't use them. So the Voting Works has the certification so they've been used.
Yeah.
You know, in some ways I, the Voting Works machine, I mean, it looks like, you see the construction worker's cell phones? You can go buy it at Verizon store or wherever you get your phone. That's what it looks like. It's a built, it's an army tank in a box. So it's very clunky, but it does the job. But like you said, that does have to be connected to the computer.
Is it US built?
Don't know that for sure.
Which Asian company is the company?
Actually, I don't know.
I re-labeled them, by the way.
R O C.
Can we gather some back?
Yeah, it's made in USA products, doesn't mean all, oh, and phones are made in USA machines.
So at least what's coming out of this is that we need to put 15,000 in budget for next year.
So there's, I don't know if you saw that email? Did I make it? Sorry, I'm just.
Yep.
Uh, there was an email that came out from the Secretary of State, David Scanlon, that the state will receive $3,500 per ballot counting device to replace any Accu-Vote machines. So when it's said and done, you know, the state's covering it, it's coming out of the other pocket. So it costs money to get that money, but from the town's perspective standpoint, you're paying for half the money.
Okay.
So they're covering half the cost.
Half the cost of them?
Correct.
Okay.
But for each one that you have, they will pay for half. So they will pay $3,500.
So what?
They'll get a salary.
And plus annual difference between the two.
So.
And one of them also required per, per-election charge.
Yes.
$500 per election.
Per election, yes. That was on the Voting Works.
Plus fee of another 500, right?
That was on Voting Works.
So 2,000 bucks a year, basically.
And I'm not sure, Laura, that it's per unit, or it's per town, that election fee. I don't think it's around that.
LHS does the same thing. Every election, we pay for the parts and we also pay for the service. Our service fee for the, what we have now is $325, I believe, a year for the service. But every election, we pay for those cars that come in from them. I can't imagine that's going to be different with the new machine.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right. We have, from the Kuntuket Lake Area Preservation Association, Frank Pataglia and Jim Luddin. And they are, and what's your position? I know Frank, you're president.
Oh, me, I'll start.
Okay.
My name's Frank Pataglia. I'm president of Kuntuket Lake Area Preservation Association. Our main mission is to preserve and improve the water quality of Kuntuket Lake. Over the years, we've been working very closely with the management department of environmental services and we've noticed a significant loss of dissolved oxygen in the lake. This is partly caused by addition of salt and organic matter. We want to bring to your attention, we're selectmen, residents of Ridge and Jaffrey. Majority of the residents, sorry, majority of residents on our lake live in Ridge as well as Jaffrey. We've already made this presentation to the Jaffrey township about two weeks back and to bring to your attention what we see relative to the water quality. Jim Luddin and Frank Belsky are board members and they work with the state in action with their voluntary lake assessment program. Each summer, we take free samples, July, August and September, and we identify the water quality of our lake. I did this presentation, which I'll go through, which will detail to you what we're seeing. Tim, sit down.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe just a little word of self-introduction so to maybe improve my credibility among all these people that come to your town meetings, which is impressive itself. But, so I have a PhD and postdoctoral experience in biochemistry from decades ago. I worked for 30 years for the largest maker of scientific instrumentation, including about eight years, just focusing on instruments in the United States, Europe and China, lived in China, to make instruments that measure environmental problems. And I retired recently and was looking for ways that I could help out in terms of the water quality of the lake we live on. And so that's what motivates me to be here. And he kind of gave a punchline a little bit, but I'm going to introduce you to dissolved oxygen here. This is a figure, I think it's from the University of Iowa, but some such place. There's a lot on the internet, you can corroborate here, but dissolved oxygen is, well, oxygen is abundant in the air. It's 18% of air. It's very, very sparse when it's dissolved in water. Fish have gills and they can, they pull all their oxygen out of the water. And so if you have, and then that scale, it's just milligrams per meter. And if you have more than four, more than nine and a half, all your fish can live just fine. And then in 1977, we had 20 parts per million or milligrams per meter, it's the same thing, of dissolved oxygen in the lake. And since 1977, you can see now that we've gone to the left and we're down at about a value of seven in an area where still most fish can live, but the direction's really moving the wrong way. We want to, we don't want it to move any further to the left. Okay? And because here is what lakes look like when they have a high oxygen versus low oxygen. High oxygen lake is on the right, you know, more transparent, better fishing, all, better recreation, fewer weeds, less odor, whereas a low oxygen lake is essentially dead. It starts to eutrophy. It starts to stink, grow more and more weeds, which I think anybody can see are more visible around the lake in recent years. And we just don't want it to move to become anything more like that picture on the left. So causes of dissolved oxygen are here and things that are shaded red are things that a town board could address, perhaps in cooperation with CLAT in this case. The temperature of the lake water is interesting. Cooler is better. Oxygen is just more, any gas at all is more soluble in cooler water. That's not anything we can do anything about. Salt or dissolved ionic content. So everybody knows sodium chloride is salt, but there's also metals, metal oxides, ammonia, phosphorus, things from all over the periodic table can be dissolved ionic content. Lower is better. The saltier lake or freshwater is, the more biology it has going, the more nutrients it has, and we don't want that. Oxygen demanding material is a way of referring to compost. And there are two kinds of compost. One is organic matter from human sources like septic compost. The other is organic matter from non-human sources like last night, pine needles and pine cones raining down out of the sky, creating silt and, and delivered into the lake by erosive runoff or erosive waves, either one. But we don't want the lake to be the place where these break down. Again, we want the compost. This is why septic treatment plants exist so that they can do the composting using the abundant oxygen from the air instead of the sparse oxygen in the water, depriving fish of their breathing oxygen and other wildlife as well. You want generally a higher flow rate, but not if it's delivering more salt or more compost. So those are the basic, those are all the buttons on the cockpit. Those are all the levers that could be pulled one way or the other. And the two that are shaded in red are salt and organic matter. You can estimate the volume of the lake, it's about 9 billion liters and you can, and you know how far the salt has changed. I got ahead of myself. So here are the values of, for the critical parameters since 1977. Seventy-seven is shaded in green and you can see dissolved oxygen used to be a value of 20, all the way to four meters deep. And after four meters, it falls right off. Now it's more like seven or even six down to three meters. Below that, there's not essentially any oxygen. So our fish are getting pushed higher and higher by the need to reef and, and we want that not to get worse. You can see the conductivity is a measurement of saltiness. It's basically you stick a pair of electrodes in lake water and you ask how conductive is it. That measures a lot more than just sodium chloride. It measures everything that's ionic. And our conductivity is about threefold higher than it used to be and the lake itself is twofold higher than the conductivity of the median of lakes in New Hampshire. So we have a saltier lake than other lakes in New Hampshire and a much saltier lake than it used to be. I didn't bring a demo. You can take, you take salt through water and put a shake of salt in it and watch the bubbles come out. It's the exact same property as when it's in. So the last point to make is that dissolved oxygen levels don't have much further to fall before we're in a problem. There's a map of the lake and a very rough amateur map of water sheds that can lead into various inlets around the lake. But the biggest one being, let's see if I can use my mouse here, the biggest one being the one in bold that extends up around Cathedral Road and that reservoir up there at the top of the hill. That contributes by far the most water into the lake. It contributes the most salt into the lake in the spring and then it calms right down in the summer. And one could hypothesize that spring salt is probably washed road salt from the winter. But then the level of lake saltiness stays at about 98 into the late summer. It doesn't really fall. And, and that is likely to be residential salt, probably coming from the residents and their septic systems dotted all the way around the lake. We want to point out that there are probably a couple of opportunities where Ridge could make a difference in the saltiness. One would be the salting of the roads along Woodbound Road, along Cathedral Road. Those seem to have direct run into the lake. And by the way, the magnitude of salt I've estimated is about in the tens of tons could make a difference. It's hard to pin the number because I don't know the turnover, I don't know the turnover efficiency of the lake. You'd need those, but let's just say rough order of magnitude, a useful way to think about this is tens of tons of salt. And we're interested in anything that Ridge would need in terms of building a case or supporting information for reducing the salt. The second thing we're keying in on is a very popular dumping of salt into the lake, about 50 pounds at a time perhaps, maybe actually adding into the tons. And all of these, this is a periodic table of elements over here on the right. By the way, it's fireworks for those of you who haven't seen it.
Yeah, fireworks in the back of the car.
So we don't dump a chemical truck into the lake. We wrap it in pretty paper, light it on fire and shoot it into the air first and clap. And then we dump it in the lake. And, and so there's the parts of the periodic table that are going into the lake. Almost all of them become ionic content. Almost all of them drive oxygen out of the lake. There's one of them that's particularly triply horrible. It's phosphorus. Phosphorus lit up the trenches of northern France in World War I. And Europe is still dealing with the aftermath of that. The phosphorus, the act of burning phosphorus makes phosphate. Phosphate is the golden fuel of cyanobacteria and it is the basis. Phosphorus is 10% of the weight of DNA and it drives all the unwanted biology in the lake cat lives through phosphorus. And unfortunately, phosphorus is a beautiful thing to watch burn as it falls into the lake. This is something we're going to be taking up with people that live in the lake and try to get every, I don't know, have a dance party or something, but let's stop dumping hundreds and hundreds of pounds of the periodic table in the lake. We want you to be aware of that. We're not necessarily asking for action from you guys. We're really thinking more about road salt and then want to extend to a comment that was made from the board in Jaffrey, which is, there's a lot of houses, yeah, I'll get to that, there are a lot of houses on Little Michigan that might benefit from being hooked to municipal septic. And Jaffrey has this brand new, beautiful, state-of-the-art septic system. And the offer from them to discuss at least, if not do, is if you guys can dig, dig the and lay the pipes, you can hook it into the Jaffrey system. And that would, that would take a large number of people's septic systems off. Septic systems being a source certainly of salt, although at a slower rate. Even a healthy septic system reaches salt into the lake. But a failing septic system for sure also sends compost right into the lake. And then, then wanted to also make you aware of towns in the state, Newport, Sonnapi and Spofford have done a lot to address septic material and creating town bylaws, I guess. One of them even passed 82% to require people in the watershed overlay zones to prove that they pump their tank every three years. And they also have new rules about getting their tanks inspected and standardizing inspection and so forth. They've discovered a lot along the way. There's, and I'm just trying to point out a few towns that seem to be places where we could learn more about people that have been a little bit ahead of us in caring about these issues. So thank you for your attention and answer any questions you can.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
What about fertilizers?
Fertilizers, may I answer a question from, yeah?
Just debating whether I was going to do that. Yeah, I'll take a few questions, but to you.
Fertilizers, lawn fertilizers.
I'm sorry, please.
Younger Clark, yes, please address the issue of homeowners and lawn fertilizers.
Lawn fertilizers are certainly pure salt, but they're worse than that because they're biologically useful salt, and some are worse than others. Lawn fertilizer is, you know, those three numbers are, the first number on lawn fertilizer is about thirty, and the second number's about two. The second number's a bad one, the second number's phosphorus, and lawns don't need a lot of phosphorus, people put a lot of nitrogen, but that still grows algae, but you don't get cyanobacteria unless you have phosphate. Vegetable fertilizers were like ten, 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 and never broadcast vegetable fertilizer, only just a bio, half a piece, when you write in the roots and then water it in, then you'll be okay. But that stuff is, ten, ten, ten in large volumes drives incredible growth of cyanobacteria. Cyanobacteria, by the way, makes a half a dozen highly toxic products, some of them last in the water as long as two months, many of them cause cancer, many of them cause nausea, and can ruin the kidneys of your dogs if they drink the lake, and so, pardon me, that's more unanswered than you wanted, but there is.
Actually, that was the question that I was, because our lake, is relatively free of cyanobacteria, we haven't.
No, there's been some blooms in recent.
Yes.
We haven't had an issue, but last year we had several.
Yeah, and I know some dog owners were very concerned about, you know, because they go down to the lake, they want to play, and so, anyway.
We are participating this year with the University of Texas, is doing a survey of lakes before and after the Fourth of July for one other thing, it's fireworks, which is perchloric acid, which is, causes thyroid cancer, and it's incredibly permanent, cannot be gotten rid of. And we've taken samples for the National Perchloric Acid Survey, and we'll share those with you when they come up. Love to just advocate, everybody needs to find a different way to have fun than to light a chemistry stock room on fire and throw it in the air.
Is there, I have a question, is there an easy way to test a shallow well? Because we have some shallow wells where they do annual fireworks in the lake, and I'm thinking of places across from you, so.
Is there an easy way to test a shallow well?
Cheap, easy.
Oh, just gather up, you know, three bottles and cover one of them in aluminum foil, and we could probably send them to, I don't know if the state will take extras that are not part of the annual survey, they don't want to create new baselines unless it's a stationary repeated thing.
Right.
But someplace like the water company in Ringe, for two or three hundred bucks, could test for all of the analytes that they do at the state level and even more, and you could get lead and arsenic and cadmium and other things that might tell you also about your road salt, because road salt is fifteen parts per billion in cadmium and heavy metals that you just don't want in your drinking water. And a lot of places in the country are really thinking about, hey, let's, everybody get better tires and let's get off the road salt.
Thank you very much.
May I, can you work with Lake Menadona people?
No, I haven't.
That's a good idea.
I haven't, we're just, we've been at this for maybe a half a year, and I have looked at their data, they report into, they take samples and report into the state also, their dissolved oxygen levels are very low. Their unwanted biology in their lake is very, you know, is obvious to the eyeball, the moment we cross the state boundary on two oh two, and I would suggest they probably have the very, very same set of concerns, whether or not they're aware. If you wanted to, you know, I can give you my contact information, if somebody there wants to talk to me, I'd be happy to talk to them.
I know there's a South Menadona Lake Association, there's one in New Hampshire, I used to live on the lake back in the seventies, so I can see the change too.
They may not have a certified G D.
Maybe not, but I know the lake has changed significantly from a water.
Yep.
Okay.
I have two questions, is this former help works, do you want me to reduce the level of road salt that goes on?
Well, as far as I know, that Woodbound is not a salt-free or sulfur-free road.
It's not.
It's not that I'm aware of, but I can ask Mike about that.
We restrict the use of salt on all roads within the town.
Yeah, he usually uses a blend that's pretty low in salt.
Have they changed in recent years, or it's been the same over a long period of time?
Same.
The same for quite a while, it's a policy on spreading of road salt.
Any chance of getting that reduced any further?
Not in drivable roads, most likely. We could just stop pulling the roads too, and then not a problem, because we wouldn't need the salt, but people wouldn't stand for that, quite obviously.
I know he uses a salt-sand mixture, and he usually leaves a little bit of material on the road when he plows, because it gets very slick if he cleans it completely. So, he's very conscious of what's getting safe. But we've had, we've had days where, you know, a first half hour was snow, especially if it's the first one of the year where people forgot to drive in snow.
Right.
We've had three accidents in thirty minutes, you know, as much. So, you know, safety is, of course, the primary concern.
Yeah, I agree with that. We have four territories along Woodbound Road that go down into the lake.
Right. That's where also the input comes in, right along Woodbound, so that would be the prime suspect for salt.
The other thing, as Jim mentioned, organic matter from septic systems, do we have any town ordinances when a house is sold to look and view the status of a septic system?
I don't know that we do.
I don't believe we do, I guess somebody would probably answer the question, who sells homes for a living.
Yeah, the state requires a site assessment on any property that's within two hundred feet, any property, not a house, but if a land is within two hundred and fifty feet of water, a great pond, state requires a site assessment to be done. Buyers usually require septic inspections on top of that.
Jaffrey requires a system inspection for a lake house at point of sale. Might be a good thing for Ringe to consider.
Actually, the state is changing, there's a new statute in the works, that the state is changing the statute. I'm not exactly sure how the end result is going to be, but it looks like buyers are going to, this is going to be mandatory.
Thank you very much, this is.
Thanks for listening to us, we appreciate it.
Appreciate you coming, thank you very much.
Carl?
Yes?
A number of years ago, Conservation Commission conducted water testing, we subsidized it, and I think we met like seventy-five people. The baseline said, it doesn't include some of these exotic chemicals, but we might entertain doing that again, if you think it might be useful.
You did water testing where?
All over the private wells in there.
Private wells, okay.
And we took the tests up to Concord and got the results, it was a lot of work, so we're reluctant to do it, but it might be useful.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We'll meet you next Conservation meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much for coming. So, we're moving on to June expenditures and revenues report, so, okay, thank you. This is a useful benchmark, half-year budget, and historically, we've usually been a little bit less than halfway through the budget in the year, and right now, most of the, like, most of the major departments are below budget, but anyway, we're cutting it pretty close if I want to make an observation. And have you guys both, I'm sorry, have you gone over this?
I've gone over it.
Yep.
You can see, total percentage of spending at the halfway point looks, it looks fine because it's under fifty percent, but that still doesn't take into account unanticipated flowering costs in the winter. It also doesn't take into account the tremendous welfare cost this year. Typically, very drily held it very tight this year, but we were kind of shocked over the, several years when the economy was getting worse and worse, but we weren't seeing more pleas for help from the welfare department, but this year, we get crushed. We've already spent one hundred and thirty percent of our budget on welfare.
Something like that's what I'm looking for right now.
It's over a hundred and thirty percent spent, fifty percent of the year through, and I'm anticipating that if we continue spending at the rate that we are right now, we're easily in that one budget and we overspend, well over thirty-five thousand dollars. We can't, we've seen in the past, we've tried to follow the welfare budget, welfare costs went up, the budget went up, and then it turns out we were way overfunded for the welfare budget because the need went down after that, so when we cut the cost, then we were under the budget line, so you can't just try and follow it all the time, you're always like a year or two years late on doing something like that. So, we're held on a daily level, and Gary's done a good job in the past, this year I can see the welfare line is getting out of control. There's one more issue, is that this board of selectmen has added salary money and expenditures and a job, which was not really anticipated during this budget, and that's going to have to be covered.
Amen.
That's my two cents.
Thank you.
I hope at the end of the year, we're only ninety-nine percent of our budget spent, that'd be a great thing, but I'm afraid.
And I've looked at the major departments, case, fire, and highway, they all are under budget by historically comparable amounts, and the, but I noticed one thing in terms of the roads, it's actually more was spent, and usually we have a lot left over for the, you know, December month and November, and that's, we're probably going to be over that if we get smacked this coming winter, so. And also, I was looking at the revenue side, and I want to have a meeting with Lori May and Lori R about the budget, but basically, the revenues are actually a little bit down, where one would anticipate they would be going up with the new housing and other things. Automobile revenues have gone up considerably, and so that is, and that's a major impact on the budget. But in terms of the tax rolls, you know, some of that has gone down, so I will explore and see where that is, or are these revenues still to be anticipated or not? Anyway, Tom, did you have any comments?
Probably more than anyone to hear. As you're pretty much aware, I know Lori is, I watch these numbers like a lot, you know, question areas, furniture every week, because I want to see the profit, probably my business background is making me do that. Just kind of in a simple nutshell, if I take out the report I got for you, and double the percentage, just for semantics, so to speak, you know, to get some sense of where it's going to go for the rest of the year, which is generally fairly consistent. If I look at it one way with just the operating side of the budget, we come in about ninety, ninety-four percent, ninety-four point five, roughly in that area, and so, we come in about three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, three hundred, under budget. And if I look at it fully loaded with more articles and things like that, which shows a forty-six point seven five percentage year to date, if you double it, you come in around ninety-three five, it shows around three hundred and eighty-four dollars, thousand dollar, you know, under. So, last year, given that we came in about a hundred and sixty, a hundred and sixty-five, was it roughly in the neighborhood? You've got to take these numbers, the three hundred and ten to three hundred and eighty, with a little bit of this grain of salt, because it includes, includes a police officer that we don't have, it includes a planning board director that we didn't have for a big part of the year, it includes also another position I believe that wasn't filled for part of the year, but generally, I think we're going to come in under, and so you've got to take those numbers with a little bit of grain of salt. But the thing that really, my year's budget committee all, so to speak, I know the select board has generally kind of said, we got to stop spending around September. My observation is that there is zero control on what we spend here, there's no purchasing system, everything I sign every week for payables has been purchased with no question. So, I would suggest to this board that we put together some sort of directive that we significantly control our spending through the end of the year. How that happens, I can't quite say, but I can easily see us being a hundred and sixty-plus thousand dollars under. And yeah, we might have a winter storm, but we had an extremely difficult spring storm this year, which, yeah, we had a mild winter, but we had a pretty good one in the fall last year, and then we didn't have anything, so I think at the current spending rate, there may be some up and down, but I think we've got a good base using these percentages and numbers to say, okay, if we stop what we're doing, we control the spending, we're going to easily come in under budget. And I don't really have a specific avenue to do that. I have looked at our accounting software, we have no purchasing controls here at all, zero. There's absolutely a comparison, that you can run an operation that's five million bucks and there's not one approval for a purchase. I didn't, I may have the purchasing agreement, but there's zero approvals required, and I think we need to implement something along that line, so that this board or the administrator approves spending nearly over five hundred bucks. Not that the people don't need it, not that our department's heads don't need it, but someone should say, what's the alternative? Can we do it differently? Do we really need it, you know? Do we break the tractor because we bought a five hundred dollar tire for it? Or do we back into something because we bought an eight hundred dollar fender? Things like that, and that's what's going to put these numbers in a real good perspective to be ahead, just like last year. So, that's kind of my take, I think we ought to implement a really tight spending policy now, not wait till September, because my experience over all these years is that we're under budget in a lot of things, and if I was a department head, and I'm speaking, if I was a department head, I know that if I was under budget, I'm not going to get it back. And it's not that they don't need it, it's that we don't want to just spend it to keep my budget the way it is. So, that's all I've got, so I think you guys can question me only at one, but they pay attention to these numbers pretty darn close. We're pretty good with overtime, by the way. It was only eight hundred something dollars this week, but we spent a fair amount on overtime, but it's generally pretty good.
Thank you.
So, I'm sure.
So, I'd like to see what we.
So I'd like to see what we can do to curtail spending. What we've done in the past is relied upon our department heads to stay within the budget of the BAC and the VOS and allow them to have any purchases that were over five thousand dollars once we T A'd, signed off on.
I saw nothing over a thousand.
So there is oversight of this.
Yes, there is.
There may be none of the oversight, Tom, I'm just looking for.
I don't know how familiar you are with purchasing policy, but I'll be happy to read the gist of it. It's in section three of, by the way, here we go. The objective of this policy is to attempt to trade a balance between the need for the department's efficiency and flexibility and the need for financial control. And the key word is accountability. Okay? I'm not going to go through all the other fluff on it. And then, section three, competitive pricing, this is the purchasing policy, right there it says it. Competitive pricing and reservations. Whenever practical or reasonable, all procurements will be made on a competitive basis using the following guidelines. Number one, goods and services of five hundred to five thousand dollars, three documented telephone or verbal quotes. For goods and services, five thousand to ten thousand, three documented written principal quotes. Anything over ten thousand requires an R F A and three bids if possible. So essentially, there's really no control. I mean, I suggest we get a purchase order system. So whenever these guys want to buy, or department heads, I won't say guys, but our department heads want to purchase something, they simply fill out an order, and there's a number associated with it, and we, it goes through an approval process. And they can go ahead and buy once it's approved. Most of what they buy is not, you know, an immediate need, supplies and things like that. Here's a very good example. And I saw this when I very first times here, in the first month. I was going through these numbers, and one of the accounts was for office and cleaning supplies. And it was like a thousand or eleven hundred dollars. And I was like, what did we buy for a thousand dollars in office cleaning supplies? It turns out eight hundred and fifty dollars of it were chairs. And they went into a cleaning supply line, they should have gone into a furniture line so we know that we purchased furniture and not files. So almost the whole expenditure on this report is skewed by eight hundred and fifty bucks because there was zero on a furniture line, even though there was no budget there. In fact, there is a budget in that department. So that's the kind of thing that gives you bad accounting.
Right.
And, you know, there are other ones in here, trust me. You know, we bought eight hundred, one hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars worth of SCBA equipment. And I know you're a fire guy, and you know I fought against it and I lost, and I'm fine. But we spent about three thousand dollars retrofitting all the tools that use the SCBA cylinders and things so that it can be used with the new equipment, because they weren't compatible. And it never came up in any discussion. It was just bought under small tools. And we're refurbishing the old equipment. And so it kind of makes me wonder why we should have approved that. Say, do we want to spend several thousand dollars, you know, refurbishing equipment? It'd be like training a, you know, a soldier with, you know, with a flintlock to an M-16, you know? It just doesn't work. We should be using the new equipment. And so there's no approvals. I don't know how we do it, if you have suggestions, I'm open. I did talk to the accounting people, and this is as good a time as any. I asked about getting a module. They do offer one. The unfortunate part is they won't sell us one because what we bought in twenty twenty-one for about fifty-something thousand bucks is probably going to be obsolete and no longer supported within the next three to five years. So we really should be moving to a big cloud system, unfortunately. I hate to say that, but they will not sell us the modules that we don't have. And I asked, I said, you won't make an exception, absolutely not. So we can't incorporate a purchasing system into our current software where all the department heads have access to the system. So where we go, I can't really tell you at this point, but it's kind of discouraging that we're headed down a path with an accounting system that's very powerful, that can give us a lot of reports. And we could do cost analysis of what we actually do from an operations standpoint. You know, we mow grass, and we're using our highway guys to mow grass, and that's fine. But what does it actually cost if you don't track the time? And if we want to go say, well, is it cheaper to go out to quote, have someone just do it and not own the equipment and maintain the equipment and all that? We can't do it because we can't utilize the software that we have to do those analysis. And we can't do it anywhere. So it's kind of a sad state of affairs, really. We're kind of piecemealing the accounting system like we did with the stuff, the police cruisers we bought one, and then we never really bought all the rest of the stuff to put in all the cruisers like we've been. So I'll just shut up. I think we need to put very serious controls in on our spending right now so that we can meet our goals, just like you said.
I think maybe throw a meeting tomorrow with the department heads. Maybe make this recommendation to the department heads, just put it on the agenda and make an recommendation to see what they can work with.
Well, I think, Bob, that's certainly a good way to approach it. I think that's, that's tomorrow. I think...
Are you trying to tighten up the budgets or the accounting?
Well, I think, well, I think the accounting is a separate issue.
I think we may leave some bounds in the accounting. I think this board approved that, the new software.
Oh, I think this software is...
It's come a long way in the last four, five years.
It's pretty decentralized, but nonetheless, I think, like Bob said, we could bring to the department heads, but I think there has to be a directive from this board because that's the only way it's going to happen. If this is the directive, and if we want to ask for approvals on purchases, we, maybe we have a work meeting and we decide how we're going to implement it, and then tell the department heads how we're going to do it. Because I really think it's something that, I mean, we're a business and we need to do it. I've talked to other towns. Generally, the ones I've talked to have a purchasing policy that anything over five hundred bucks requires approval. And unfortunately, they both had town managers, so the town manager is the one who approves it. Lori's in a little different situation, but I think we could create some kind of process where it's Lori or two selectmen, just like we sign the payables every week, we could have a day that we approve all purchase orders we get through that week. And it would be pretty simple. I don't know what we're going to start.
We could discuss the numbers in there. Like I said, I already am approving the ones over a thousand, and you guys approve, I think it's anything over five thousand, if they put it right in your folder.
Well, I haven't approved anything before it's bought. And I can tell you right now, I haven't been asked.
Well, that's because in the past, the department heads have had, have been able to utilize their budget, like Bob said.
Freely, without any approval.
They trust the department heads to make this.
I'm not saying we don't trust them. I'm just saying we ask them to approve before they buy their stuff.
That's why I think it should be brought to the department heads to discuss it with them ahead of time rather than come up with something that they got to kick and scream about. We might as well have the cooperation from the various staff.
Well, I don't disagree, Bob. I think that's important. But ultimately, we're responsible for the financial status of this town, not that department heads' decision needs to come from this thing.
I think we could round back what other towns are doing too. I think we could tighten up without purchasing the software system.
We're not going to be able to. We had something in the background, I said, maybe twenty-seven. And so, I was kind of surprised.
I just had one point, it's despite anything that we purchase, we're finding out, in this day and age, everything has a time limit, it has a time limit. You can only keep tasers for five years, you can only keep vests for so many years, you can only keep SCBA equipment for so many years, you can only keep baby's car seats for so many years. Everything has an expiration date on it.
You know what it's called with software and stuff?
Reoccurring revenues, Bob. I know, but then you put all this into law, you make it a mandate that people do, replace these things during those timeframes, then we're kind of screwed. So the more we're allowing government to oversee us and tell us when we have to replace something, what we have to do, the worse we get off. I kind of thought of that a little bit when we heard the water presentation, that they want to have so many more regulations as far as the fireworks and the phosphates and the fertilizer and this and that. Some of these things have already been done, but it would become burdened by larger government telling us what we have to do, what we can do, what we have to, what we have to buy, and who we have to buy it from, for the sake of it.
So a couple of good suggestions have come out of this. One is, I've scheduled a meeting for next year, a meeting for planning on that. I think a working meeting of the board should follow something like that. And also, I think it needs to go to the department heads, you know, to look at the budgets and have them possibly come up with what's a workable approval process. A lot of the things have been voted for, we put something in the budget, it's for a specific item, and so whether, you know, they're required to put up is free if possible. Sometimes it's not possible, like slate roof, how many people do slate roofs? So we do the best we can on that. And so I think all that process needs to be gotten through. Before we come out with dictates to the department heads, I think we need to have their input, and they need to be part of the process on this. In terms of the freedom to spend, I haven't seen it in too many departments in this town. Basically, I think they do an excellent job in terms of planning and making decisions. Also, in the past, they've been, I haven't seen also the idea that, well, I've got an extra hundred thousand, I should spend it, or I won't get it next year.
I'm not saying that.
Doesn't happen here.
I agree with you, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that we approve a gross budget, and right now, based on the numbers I've seen in June, we could come in easily a hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollars on it.
I want to finish though. And I think also in the past, they've done excellent job that when they get to the end of the year and one department is under and one is, you know, in serious need of plow time or snow that was not necessarily anticipated, the other department heads have been very cooperative in terms of sharing budgets. So we rarely have, I've heard incidents where someone went and, you know, the year, and it's not a department that matters. Anyway.
And I'll go back there, Bob, if I can, probably quickly, you know, we talked about it earlier, and I saw it, just like Bob there, it jumped off the page.
Right, exactly.
You know, we spent a hundred and sixteen dollars, a thousand, you know, percent of it, I'm sorry, percent of it. You know, she's about, what do we got, nine, she's about six thousand dollars over budget. Maybe we, she's the first one we ask, you want to spend something, come in and ask for your own budget here.
Well, for spending determined by law.
I don't know how you feel about that, but I think that's a start.
Two things, I'd like to address that, but I'd like to ask, Kyle, check, can we expedite or expedite some of this stuff? We only have four items left, and I'd like to get through them quick.
Agreed.
We're getting very late. A lot of the things in the welfare budget aren't timely, and they can't wait, they can't wait two hours. Some of these people during the winter need oil. They, they're going to go out with a gas can and have to buy some of this oil. They need it right now. They cannot wait two weeks or a week to get approval to buy five hundred dollars worth of oil, which I don't think they ever get that much money, but rental would, things like that.
It's all grant assistance.
Some of it was electricity and fuel. There's some things that cannot be worked around in the purchase order system, such as people coming in who have no heat vehicles, but with different...
And your other point, I'm sorry?
To expedite the last four items.
Exactly. All right. Thank you for your thought on all this, and you're right, and we need to get moving on this town. So anyway, I think we, I think we need to schedule something, a working meeting at some point. I'm not sure when. Next week might be too soon, but I'm thinking in three weeks.
I was going to participate in a department meeting, kind of throw it out there and say the work, the work meeting in this direction if the board is okay with that.
Yeah, well, I have attended, in the past, I tend to be observing more than giving input, but, and it's probably more purpose, this is a board meeting, to get information from the department heads. I would say I'd rather let her do this one, also, you know, in terms of setting guidelines and putting forward without having to deal with the GAO summit, and that they're freely, they're free, but first.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Lori and I talked enough, so I think she can ask any questions.
Thank you. All right. So we, all right, so I would like to put this as completed as, but in the works. Intent cuts, we had two. I've gone over them, actually from Alaska. And thank you for sending them to me. But anyway, we have to sign them anyway, so have you gone over there?
I've gone over them. Did Concon have a chance to take a look at these properties and see if there's any problems with that?
I think they were emailed to Concon the same time you were here.
Last week.
Kids usually do copies, I think David or Alan.
It wasn't on our agenda, I didn't see it. You could check with her tomorrow.
We've got, well, those are times, but our next meeting is going to be, got to be in.
Yes. I think they have, what, fifteen days or something?
By the time these usually get to us, they're already late.
Last week, yes, I know.
I'd like to move forward and let Concon look at it in the process.
Okay. So elderly exemptions.
So what do we want to do? Do we want to approve?
I would approve them at this time. I didn't see anything as critical in those, in terms of locations.
Do you want to make a motion to approve that?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the intent cuts on map four, lots two dash three, three dash three, and thirty-four dash one. Map six, lots thirty-four dash two and thirty-four dash three.
Point of order, you've got the map numbers wrong. Thirty-four dash one is on map six.
That's what I said. Oh, thirty-four dash one is correct on map six, so that's on the other one? Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Right. Right, thank you. Anyway, do I have a second? Anyway, do I have a second as amended? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Elderly exemptions filed late, I didn't get a chance to see them. We had a couple. And do you want to address this?
They're in the vanilla folders.
Right.
There's a denial folder and then a proof folder.
Correct. All right.
And they're basically Avatar's recommendations.
Yeah.
I went through them too.
Yep, I went through them also. And we have, let's see, let me put a number on this, one, two, three, four, and these were veterans exemption, elderly exemption, granted. The recommendations on three of them. Okay, I remember I saw this, I don't know where it is now. Yeah, the worst, I'm not sure, I don't see the granted or not granted. Oh, yeah, it's granted at the top, yeah, thank you. All four of these were recommended granting, and I would make a motion to go along with these recommendations for these, I'm sorry, they are elderly exemptions and as done by Avatar. Also, we have.
Did you say those were denials?
No, there are no denials.
Yes, I think that's a denial.
This is denial. There are two on denials, and these were also recommended as denials, so we have four recommended, and that's the accepted ones.
Yeah, I'm fine with the recommendations by the assessing people. One of them was the application was withdrawn, that's why it was denied, and the other one was the income is over no limits, and that was the reason for the denial on the elderly. So most of the two reasons, I'm happy with that. I'll sign it.
Thank you.
Those are the approvals.
Those are four approved.
And two denials as recommended by Avatar. So did we make, have finished the motion?
No, you did not.
Thank you, Victoria. Okay. So I make a motion to accept the four approvals and granted and two denials as made by Avatar. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Don't know what I'm doing with Dr. Victoria, especially this late at night.
These all go into, Kim, yeah, Kim?